Good evening. This is the Spencer Special Town Meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. My name is Peter Adams and I am your town moderator. I am advised that we have a quorum and call the meeting to order, waiving the reading of the return of the warrant and noting for the record that it has been served as required by law. For those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join your fellow town meeting members in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing thereafter for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence and respect for all of those victims of others' intolerance and cruelty in many parts of the world and most especially for those who have died in the torrent of inhumanity we have witnessed over the last few weeks in the Sinai Peninsula, Lebanon, Paris, and Nigeria. Thank you. Please be seated. Every day we make history in the conduct of our normal affairs. Tonight we will make history as we exercise our right of self-determination to settle the affairs of our town government by consensus as a free and equal people in this, the two-hundred-and-sixty-second year of our existence as a body politic. Our decisions will be chronicled and preserved. In future days, others will reflect on our actions through the lenses of time and judgment to discern the jewels worthy of inclusion into the lore of our combined experiences as a town, a state, or a nation. And yet, though we are the creators of this history, by necessity, we often fail to realize the historical significance of what we do. I believe there is no better example of this than what transpired on this date one-hundred-and-fifty-two years ago, November nineteenth, eighteen sixty-three, when President Abraham Lincoln rose before nine-thousand people convened in a semicircle around a platform as part of the dedication of the Soldiers' National Cemetery at Gettysburg, put on his steel-framed glasses, and delivered a two-minute speech for the ages, one that would ultimately define and be deemed the guiding force of this republic, that government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from the earth. When he finished, the audience, having just endured a two-hour address by a noted orator and stunned by the brevity of Lincoln's words, stood transfixed. Applause followed only when Lincoln turned to his chair. As he did so, he remarked to an aide that the speech was a flat failure and the people are disappointed. In a historical perspective, we know that it wasn't and they weren't. Tonight and in nights of future years, may we honor the spirit of that now famous address by governing wisely in behalf of all of the people as we continue this grand experiment in governance by and for the people. We give thanks tonight to Spencer Cable Access for their continued support of your right to know through telecast of this and other governmental meetings. Excuse me. On the stage, on stage left is the Select Board, Gary Woodbury Chair, John Stevens Vice-Chair, Chris Woodbury Quirk, Tony Pepe a member, Beau Fritz a member. To the rear of the Select Board is the Town Administrator Adam Gardett and Town Council Stanley Weinberg. On stage right is the Finance Committee, and Mary Brany will introduce its members.
Good evening. To my left is Paul McLaughlin, Vice-Chair of the Finance Committee, and then Chris Bowen, Tom Parker, Bill Wall, Nancy Herrholtz, who is the clerk.
Thank you. Seated to my left is my town meeting colleague, Town Clerk Laura Towery. The Chair extends the gratitude of the town to Julie Parento and John Damaris for their past service on the Finance Committee and extends an invitation to those of you who may be interested in joining the committee. We have two vacancies to fill. If you are of such a mind, please contact the Town Administrator or me directly by email at adamsspencer@gmail.com. Ground rules: Questions of parliamentary procedure are decided by reference to Town Meeting Time: A Handbook of Parliamentary Law. On articles presented for your consideration, they will be summarized by me, a motion will be read, the Finance Committee will make a recommendation, the moving party will speak, and then any other speakers may address the meeting. Yes ma'am? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's difficult to hear in the back of the auditorium.
You don't want me to start all over again, do you?
There's a front row empty.
Let me get closer to the mic, is that better? To be recognized, just shout "Mr. Moderator," raise your hand, we'll make a lot of noise so we know where you are, and you can speak, we'll have one speaker at a time up here. The ground rules for addressing the meeting: You must use the microphone in the front, you must identify yourself, and give your home address. Amending an article: That must be done in writing and seconded. We have motion forms here at the desk if you wish to make an amendment to any article which is presented. Amendments must then be decided before the main question is voted. That being said, the Chairman recognizes Adam Gardett, Town Administrator, who will give us a short presentation on comprehensive road project the town is considering undertaking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, my name is Adam Gardett, I'm the Town Administrator, and the gentlemen that are walking up with me are members of a subcommittee, Financial Management Planning Committee, and they have been charged by the Board of Selectmen to study long-range financial issues for the town. To my right is Tony Pepe, he's the Chair of the Committee, he is a member of the Board of Selectmen. To his right is John Stevens, he's also a member of the Board of Selectmen. To his right is Paul McLaughlin, he's on the Finance Committee. To my left is Tom Parker, also on the Finance Committee, and then Rich Hebsen, who couldn't be here, he's on our Capital Committee. Still can't hear me? All right. So I wanted to just make a brief announcement, I didn't want to make a big presentation or have a question and answer period, but the gentleman behind me wanted you to know the work that they're working on, along with myself and staff, Steven Tyler, who's our Utilities and Facilities Superintendent, and several consultants. We are currently analyzing the road conditions of our town. As you know, we have some roads, some more notable than others, that have certainly worn condition and are less than the condition that we'd like them to be. So we've hired some consultants to analyze the conditions of the road, we've looking at different scenarios in terms of making improvements to those roads. You have a handout with you that has a couple of graphs on here, I just wanted to just point that out and have you take that home with you, and if you have any questions, my email is on here, as well as a website link that will point you to a lot of information that we're putting together via consultants regarding funding, regarding road conditions, comparisons of our roads to other communities, et cetera. So I'm not going to go in too much detail with this, but some of the numbers that we're looking at are quite daunting. Some preliminary numbers we've looked at for the conditions of the roads in terms of a backlog to get them where we'd like them to be are certainly in the millions, up and around twenty to thirty million. We only get about five-hundred-thousand dollars per year from our state through the Chapter Ninety program, which certainly we do our best, and you see some of the activities that are going around town now are utilization of those funds, but certainly they're not enough to get us where we want to be. So the graph on your left shows you a number right in the middle of the graph, has varying road conditions. The number fifty-one point two is, our consultant pointed out to us on a scale of one to a hundred, everybody can relate to what that is in the classroom, fifty-one point two is certainly not a very high level and a failing number, if you will. Some of the numbers of other towns around us, Webster has a seventy, I think, sixty-four, West Boylston and Millbury at sixty, so we're below our neighbors, we know that. We need to put some funds to these projects. We can't rely solely on state funding, it's very hard to do and to keep up with the backlog. If you look at the graph on the bottom right, you'll see the black line represents the history or the trend that we're going on, and you can see it's below fifty-five and it's continually going down. If we stay with the funding that we have now, which is the purple line, you can see that if we continue with just relying on Chapter Ninety, we're heading towards even a further grade of despair, if you will. So we're looking at some of the colored lines above in terms of different funding scenarios, in terms of how that would improve our overall conditions of the road. Obviously, we have, you know, many people that commute, we have people that come into town to work, we have, obviously, our school buses and public safety to worry about, so I'm sure everyone knows the conditions of our roads, can do some work. We'd like you to pay attention to some of the work that these gentlemen are doing. We'll have more information, more announcements, we'll have some public hearings as the budget season begins after the first of the year, so we hope you would come and join us and give us some feedback on some of the information that we're providing you. Look again at our website, the link is on here, and also you can email me or stop in anytime, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. So I'm not going to take any questions, but I will stick around at the end of the meeting if anyone would like to come up and just have a discussion, and stay tuned, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gardett. Article One. Article One concerns the payment of a bill from the prior fiscal year, and it's to appropriate ninety dollars to pay a bill for laboratory quality, water quality testing for the Water Department, and to meet the appropriation by transfer within the department. Requires a nine-tenths majority. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article One as printed in the warrant. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approving.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? I see none opposed, and the Chair declares that passed by a unanimous vote of one-hundred to nothing. Article Two. Article Two is an Article Two, raise and appropriate additional funds with regard to the Smith Regional Agricultural High School tuition account and transportation account. Each year we vote on this article at the annual town meeting in May, but the bills don't come in until after the fiscal year starts, and there's always adjustment. Motion I have is to waive the reading and approve Article Two as printed in the warrant, it requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Mr. Pepe.
Mr. Moderator, just a reminder that this is something that we are legally bound to pay the bill for, for curriculum that we do not offer in this district, we are bound to pay tuition and transportation expenses.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the Chair declares that the ayes have it, by majority vote. Now, Article Three and Article Four are going to be discussed. Article Three and Article Four will be discussed together. The first one relates to rescinding Article fourteen, Article fourteen, I believe it is, yes, from the annual town meeting, which was the annual budget for the town. And then Article Four is going to go through a reappropriation of sums, and this is an adjustment that we do every year. In most years, we can do this with one or two lines, however, this year it's become quite complex, and we have about twenty adjustments to do. So what we're going to do first is to take the Article Three, which calls for rescission of the budget, and if that passes, we will then have discussion on that article and also on the substance of Article Four, which are the adjustments. And then we will turn to a vote on Article Four. So Article Three, the motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Three as printed in the warrant, it requires a majority vote. The motion is by Mr. Pepe and seconded by Mr. Fritz. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three contingent upon approval of Article Four.
Okay. Mr. Gardett. I think, all right, we'll take a vote on that now. All those in favor of rescinding Article fourteen, the annual town meeting vote from May of two thousand and fifteen, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it, carries by a majority vote. And now we will go to Article Four. And Article Four is the adjustment. Each of you has this packet in the back of your warrant, which are all the financial figures that Mr. Gardett is going to dazzle you with in just a moment.
Sure.
What we're basically doing here is a new fiscal two thousand and sixteen budget to the general government, which essentially raises the overall budget by about a hundred and four thousand dollars. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Four as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Pepe, seconded by Mr. Fritz, it requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four.
Thank you. Mr. Gardett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm going to discuss a page that's in your packet, that's just the first page behind the warrant, it's entitled "Revisions to Previously Approved Budget for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Sixteen." That's what it says on the top, it has a spreadsheet with a chart of numbers in the middle. I'm going to be working off of that page. If anybody can't find it, please let me know. You have your warrant, and then after the signature page, you should see a page with a bunch of numbers. On the very top, it says "Revisions to the Previously Approved Budget for Two Thousand and Sixteen." I'm going to hold it up now, and if anybody can't see, please let me know. Page eight, eighth page in your packet, thank you. So as the moderator said, we sometimes have not had to do this, but we have the last few years, due to the fact that there has been multiple changes that come after the fact when we approve our budget in May. As everybody knows, the budget that we do in May falls before the fiscal year starts on July first, and we need to do that, obviously, so that we can move forward with our operations in the next subsequent fiscal year and have authorization from you folks to begin spending money. What we do in the fall, because we have this opportunity for a second look at the budget, we tend to adjust our numbers based on new information that's come out or information that has become more accurate. For example, our state aid, we, when we close our warrant in April for the annual town meeting in May, the state has not yet finalized their budget, they don't do that until after July first, and the governor has ten days and usually signs it in mid-July. So with that, and some other revenues, we've been able to identify as changes or more accurate, the very top four or five light items that you see, where it says gray, revenue adjustments, those are adjustments that we are making in our budget because of information that is now become before us that is more accurate. The first one is new growth. New growth is any money that's come onto the tax rolls due to new construction that occurred in two thousand and fifteen, and now we are allowed to apply that to our estimated tax levy coming in two thousand and sixteen. That number is not approved by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue until September or October or so. So we had a guess of seventy-five thousand back in the spring, the Department of Revenue approved us of one oh nine, we now have almost thirty-five thousand dollars of additional funds to spend. The second item is the local aid or cherry sheet, it's a very small change, but it was a change, and that's our state aid. The third item is called bond premium reserves, that's related to the debt that we have, that's part of our debt exclusion approvals that you've approved in the past at the ballot, that includes projects such as the Sibley Farm purchase, the ladder truck that we purchased, Town Hall, et cetera. These reserves come back to us by the people that are buying our debt, and we're allowed to apply them as a revenue source and offset any decrease in our levy. And then the last thing is Water Department, the Water Department reimburses the general government part of the budget, and there were some minor changes to their budget, so we altered their reimbursement number. The big number at the top that you need to know of is the eighty-two thousand five hundred and two. That's new money that became available to us since May, when you approved the town meeting budget. So we have a couple of things we can do, we can reappropriate it, which is we're going to do, we can put it into reserves. In this case, because we had so many changes in the middle part of the sheet, I'm going to explain to you, we really needed that revenue, and we're going to make good use of it. So the middle part, if you go all the way to the bold line on the bottom where it says one oh four, one twelve, that's that middle section of additional net expenses that we have. So the top, you'll see eighty-two thousand five hundred and two, new revenues, as I move about two-thirds down on the page, you'll see one hundred and four thousand dollars of new expenses, and I'll explain how we're going to balance that. But I'm going to go through these expenses, these changes, some are additional expenses, and actually some are reductions in our budget, where money actually was freed up due to changes that have occurred since May. So if anyone has any questions, please stop me on any of these line items, I have as much detail as you want, or I have as little detail as you want. So the first one I'm going to talk about is right under that second gray bar of expense adjustments, which is the Smith vocational, that was Article Two that you previously voted on, that was the eighteen hundred dollars of additional funds that you previously approved, that's a new expense for us, or an additional expense, I should say, since May. The reason for that is because the Department of Education does not vote on the tuition rates for out-of-district schools until after we have our town meeting in May. So we get those rates, we come here in the fall, and we readjust our budget to account for that. Now I'm going to go through the twenty-twenty-five or so line items, some of them are shifting between departments or internally in the same department, for example, the assessors and the treasurer and collector. Anytime we make any change or shifting in a department budget, they only have two line items, they have personnel or wages and salaries, and then they have expenses. Anytime we move money from say personnel to expenses, or expenses to personnel, it requires a vote of the town meeting, okay, and that's why they're on here. We can't just simply move them around at a vote of the Selectmen or on our own, so that's why you see them on here. So I'm going to go through these, and again, stop me if you have any questions, I'll look for your hands, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. The first adjustment that we're going to make is in the Selectmen's budget. Some of you are familiar with, the school department, over the summer, closed Lake Street School, it's actually still in their hands, they have not turned it over to us, but we expect that to happen in the next month or two, and the Selectmen and I decided that it'd be prudent of us to carry a little bit of funds for utilities just to get us through until the spring, in case we have, you know, obviously we have security, we have electricity to keep on, and the heat at a minimum amount. So when they do give that to us, turn over the key, we'll have a little bit of money. That was not relevant to us back in April when we closed the warrant for the May town meeting, so we have a small appropriation for that. The town accountant, there's an adjustment in her budget, she was going to retire as of December thirty-first, so I accounted for some additional funds for consulting to handle with that transition, that money's no longer needed because she's decided to stay until June thirtieth, so that actually freed up some money in our budget. The assessors, there's a shift between expenses, which is the fifty-one, I mean, sorry, the personnel's fifty-one, and then the expenses of the line and below that. If you're not aware, Mary Williams, our principal assessor, she retired over the summer. We hired a new assessor, who's here tonight, Linda LeBlanc, and as part of that transition, we had some additional costs, moving back and forth between expenses and salary. We had, you know, when someone leaves us, they take their, any outstanding benefit time that they have to them, so that's something that's not normally in the budget, but we account for that, and we had a little bit of consultant money that we freed up to apply to that. Treasurer Collector, the same thing, we're shifting three thousand dollars between their professional expenses and their wages. And Town Council, we had a small reduction in the amount that's allotted for that based on historical spending, that freed up a little bit of money. Information Technology, we changed private vendors this year, and we saved a little bit of money in our contracts, obviously we have computer networks and servers and other things, and we have a private vendor that does that for us in terms of repairs and technical assistance. Changing the vendor saved us a little bit of money. We had budgeted a high number of expenses for tax title back in the spring, and after our closeout as of July first, and looking at previous history, we felt we could lower that, freeing up about twenty thousand dollars. Our elections and registers, we have some additional costs that we're going to need for this fiscal year due to the fact that the Selectmen and discussions with the town clerk have decided that come next May, the polling hours were going to go back to seven a.m. to eight p.m. rather than what they are now in terms of twelve p.m. to eight p.m. So as part of that change and the additional time that's required, there's some additional costs, obviously for poll workers and police details and other expenses that we have associated with holding longer hours at the town election come May. The Police Department, there was some additional expenses, the ones in bold, I'm going to highlight, we had a sergeant that retired this past July, Sergeant Agnew, and we also had an officer, Officer Sullivan, leave us for his hometown, and those two vacancies have added to, obviously, some overtime requirements, we've had some costs that are associated with the new hiring process, background checks, and other professional consulting costs that we have when hiring new officers, we're working on hopefully closing those two positions by the end of the year. They have uniform costs, we also had a dispatcher, Donna Anderson, she retired this year, so we had some transition there, so we had to advertise and hire, and in that case, we also had a couple of weeks overlap that we normally wouldn't have in our budget, but we asked her to stay on just a little bit and train the new person coming on. So with that, there's some additional costs, the reason they're highlighted in bold is the Selectmen and I discussed taking free cash or some one-time surplus money that we have to apply it to the budget, because as, if you recall, on the top, I explained there was eighty-two thousand dollars in new revenue, and then further down below, I have a hundred and four to a hundred and five thousand additional expenses to make up that gap, we're going to use a little bit of free cash that we have, and we feel that we're comfortable doing that one-time adjustment, because those expenses in the Police Department aren't a recurring expense that we're going to have every year. You know, we haven't had officers retire or leave in a long time, and having that transition and the additional costs associated with that, we don't feel they'll be there, it's a recurring expense that we need to carry over a year. So at the end of the day, when I get through all this, you'll see at the very bottom, you'll see a zero at the bottom, that means the new revenues and the new expenses that we have are going to cancel, cancel out. So moving on into Otis, that's our Office of Development and Inspection Services, that's our Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Zoning Board, and we have some inspectors, on-call inspectors there as well. Our town planner, who we've been sharing with the town of Lester this past May, went back to Lester full-time. So several years ago, the town of Lester reached out to us when they were looking to have, they had money problems, they were looking for some savings, they sent their planner to us to fill a gap here that we had, and that position, the actual position was vacant when I came up to the Town Administrator position, and Michelle Buck, who had been our town planner for the last three years, worked part-time in Spencer and part-time in Lester. Well, we didn't know until after the May town meeting that occurred in Lester that they voted appropriations to take her back full-time and fund her position full-time, so it vacated a position here. So what we're doing with that money in the interim is we've hired a consultant out of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they're a public agency, a quasi-public agency, that's a regional planning commission out of Springfield, they do a lot of grant work for us, they do our community development block grants, for example, some of the projects we work on are Mechanics Street, that construction, that came from a grant. So Pioneer Valley Planning Commission offers a lot of services, one of them is grant writing and grant administration, and the other, they offer is planning services, so we are carrying some additional costs for that until we see where we are come spring in the budget and see how we'll restore or revisit that town planner position come spring. The transfer station, we made, we need to make an adjustment in salary based on changes that the Selectmen and staff have made moving into this year. The council on aging, this may be one that people want to talk about, we've set aside thirty thousand dollars of the new revenue, and with some of the money that's being freed up here, to set aside to move our senior center where we previously were renting at the Fish and Game Club, to move that into the Maple Street School. So since I've been here, the senior center's been in, I think, four locations, all rented, and there hasn't been a permanent structure for them. Since I've been here, and along with the Selectmen and the the selectmen and council on aging and our director, we've been looking at permanent solutions to providing a space for our seniors. Our seniors' population, I think, is a little bit under twenty-five percent here in town of our overall population. There's a lot of need there, and a lot of programs we'd like to offer. So looking back a couple of years, when the Maple Street School became, came back to the town, if you recall, the school department, with their budget crisis, turned that school back to us, we began looking at that as a possible solution for a permanent location for our senior center. In addition to that, possibly other community uses, whether we outgrow this building, or we have other uses within our community, nonprofits or other, that would like to take advantage of that space. If you're familiar with some of the senior centers around us, old school buildings are commonly converted to senior centers. I know Paxton, Stirbridge, Charlton, Northbridge is a town I'm familiar with. They're all former school structures. So Maple Street seemed to make sense for us. The basement floor there has a nice space, it has tables, has handicap-accessible parking, elevator bathrooms, also has the cafeteria. So we thought that would be a good solution. So a couple of years ago, actually last year, about fifteen months ago, that was included in one of the override questions that you had, in terms of adding expenses, because at that time, when the school was coming back to us, we didn't have additional revenue available. The only way we could do that was through additional appropriations with your authorization. And also, as part of those questions, as you recall, we had some, some dire needs and some dire cutbacks that we had to make. Town Hall, we lost a highway position, fire department training, and other, as part of all of that override. The only way we could maintain those things and then add the senior center was with additional funds. So that didn't happen, unfortunately. But the selectmen and myself and the council on aging have continued to work on and look for other creative solutions. So we have a solution here that we proposed to you tonight as part of this budget change, and it doesn't involve any additional taxes, or any increase to the levy, or authorization, other than the town meeting vote tonight to shift money or reappropriate additional revenue that's come to us as of May first. So we do have a lot of needs in our community. We have a lot of places we'd like to take advantage of any new revenue we have. The reason that we've allocated these funds to the senior centers is because of the lease that was running out from the place that they were renting over the summer. If we didn't apply any funds to that use, there would be no place for our seniors at all. So it seemed like a good fit. We've looked at that building for a while as a permanent solution, and as part of that, we've allocated thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars comes from an analysis that we performed when evaluating the cost that the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District had when they occupied that building. So those monies go towards electricity, they go towards the heat of the building, and that's where the thirty thousand dollars comes from. So if it's approved as part of this budget, again, no additional taxes, and our seniors can have a permanent location moving forward. So if there's no any questions, I'll move on to the next item. And also, I can answer any questions at the end. The next line item is also in the council of aging budget. That is five thousand dollars to increase our senior work program. We have a senior work program that some of the other towns around us do as well, where we set aside some funds. Typically, it's been about fifteen thousand dollars, where taxpayers of, that meet the age requirement, our elderly or our senior population, along with meeting low-income guidelines, they can work off a portion of their taxes, up to a thousand dollars, by working about a hundred and twenty hours in a town hall department, or any other town department, providing assistance or working on projects. So it's been a great program for us, and a lot of people have taken advantage of it, such that we had five or so additional applicants this year. We'd like to fund those folks and help them. It's a win-win for everybody. They get to work off some of their taxes, and obviously, we get some extra work done. So in order to meet that demand, we've asked to apply five thousand dollars additional. That would take that line item fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. The next line item, Veteran Services, that is to apply an additional ten thousand dollars to the benefits portion of their expense budget. We have a lot of veterans that come back to us in the need. This money goes to those folks that have come back that meet low, again, low-income guidelines, that need help with heat and medical and other expenses. They work through our Veterans Agent, and the expenses, if they are approved, under statutory state guidelines, we will give them reimbursement for those expenses. And because of the demand that we have had in the last few years, we are continuously adding to that budget. So it's a good problem to have. By putting money to it, we know that we're addressing a need, and that's one of the things we'd like to do here tonight. The next line item is our Library Services budget. That's to apply, apply an additional one thousand seventy-five dollars to their subscription and book requirement, in order to meet the state matching grant requirement of fifteen percent, I believe, of their, sixteen percent of their budget being applied to that expense. We had some savings in our employee benefits. That's the next line item down, fifteen thousand dollars. That's our workman's comp, which doesn't come in till after July first. Again, it's a number that we guess in May. We have an accurate number come July, and that actually freed up fifteen thousand or so. And our last line item is the general insurance number. Our liability insurance, auto insurance, et cetera, had an increase of about forty-seven hundred, and that's all of the line items. So are there any questions on any particular department? There's staff here tonight. Myself can also answer any questions. If not, I'll get into how we balance and get a zero at the bottom. And I'll also, I'll stick around at the end of the night, too, if anyone has any questions. But you can see the one hundred and four thousand, that is the net from the reductions or the savings that we had in some areas in our budget, offset with those increases that I mentioned. We add those to the eighteen hundred above, from the Smith vocational, gives us a total of one hundred and five thousand. That's the first number below the bold line at the bottom. That's our total number of new expenses. We then are taking the thirty-one thousand dollars in one-time surplus, that's free cash, to apply to those Police Department expenses that I said that were not occurring. And that gets us to seventy-four thousand nine twenty-two, in terms of our net expenses that we have left to fit into our budget. Looking at the very top, as I described to you in the beginning, we had about eighty-two thousand dollars in new revenue. So that new revenue being above the net change in expenses leaves us about seventy-five hundred bucks at the bottom. We're gonna apply that to a reserve that we apply to people when they, when they obtain an abatement. We have a reserve fund for that, so that when we, we adjust our tax levy based on any abatement awards. So that cancels everything out, and that's how we ended up with a net zero budget. So we're not asking for any additional tax levy. We're actually asking for a little bit of additional appropriation, but that's because of the new revenue that was allotted to us at the very top. So that's the whole reason of, you know, rescinding Article Three, approving a new Article Four. There was just so many changes that we've had since May. Sometimes we only have, for example, the one in Article Two that you saw, and there's no need for this other stuff. But because we had so many, we felt that it would be great to give you as much information as possible. We're an open book. We wanna give you that information, give you an opportunity to discuss it if you like. It's your tax dollars going to the specific departments and addressing their needs, so that they can provide the services that you all desire. So are there any questions? Okay. Thanks for your time. And I'm gonna turn it back to the moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Gardett. That was a most appreciated and concise explanation of the budget. All right. So the question before you, then, is essentially to rework the budget. We'll do that through a combination of moving funds around, as explained by Mr. Gardett. It's a majority vote. Any questions? Last chance. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the ayes have it, by a majority vote. Article Five. Article Five is a question which is similar to what we just went through with Articles Three and Four. For the town budget, this one concerns the Water Department budget. And what we will do in Article Four will be to rescind Article Fifteen of the annual town meeting, which was the annual budget for the Water Department, conditional upon approving of Article Six, which will be a reworking of that budget. So the motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Five as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Fritz and seconded by Mr. Stevens. It requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those that are opposed? And the ayes have it, by a majority vote. Article Six. Article Six is to rework the Water Department budget, to appropriate one million three hundred seventy thousand six hundred and ten dollars for the Water Department, and to fund the appropriation with the transfer from receipts and revenues from the Water Enterprise Fund. That's their free cash, collected by the Water Department for this coming fiscal year. Water Enterprise Fund, excuse me, is not their free cash. That's their, their ongoing account. And to also authorize indirect costs. The total of this amounts to about seventy-two hundred dollars in additional funds. So the motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Six as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. It requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Article Seven. Article Seven is an article to transfer one thousand dollars from free cash to the sick leave buyback account. This will balance the account for outlays which were occasioned by the two retirements that Mr. Gardett just spoke about. This money will be met by appropriating and transferring from previously certified and available free cash. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant. Requires a majority vote. The motion is by Mr. Chris Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Gary Woodbury. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the ayes have it, the motion carries. Article Eight. Article Eight is an article to replenish a reserve account for the Board of Health site cleanup in the amount of five thousand dollars, and to meet this appropriation by transferring from free cash. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant. The motion is by Mr. Chris Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Gary Woodbury. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions? Comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the ayes have it, the motion carries. Article Nine. Article Nine involves a transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Water Department free cash, which is called retained earnings, to an upgrade capital account. This requires a majority vote. The motion I have is I move to approve the reading and waive, and approve, waive the reading and approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Beau Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Article Ten. Article Ten cleans, cleans up two older capital accounts, and puts money into a new capital account, and this involves the Water Department. Capital account transfer of eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars roughly, and one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars roughly. Both of these to go into the capital efficiency plan account from the existing Water Department capital account. So strictly intra-depart, intra-departmental transfer. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Ten as printed in the warrant. The motion is by Mr. Fritz, seconded by Mr. Stevens. It requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? And the ayes have it, the motion carries. Article Eleven. Article Eleven involves transfers in the Sewer Department capital accounts into and from their retained earnings into another capital account, which involves, I believe, clarifier upgrade project. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Gary Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Chris Woodbury. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval of the transfer.
Questions? Comments? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the question carries by a majority vote. Article Eleven. Article Eleven is the capital expenditure account that we do every year. This involves three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund various capital improvements, as listed in the warrant, for the library, the fire department, the highway department, and the town hall. And you can see the individual items there. The funding will be done with two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from free cash, and eighty thousand dollars from the landfill cap repair capital account. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Gary Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Chris Woodbury. It requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the, the motion carries by a majority vote. Article Thirteen is a request to transfer from free cash fourteen thousand dollars to the Town Hall Boiler Replacement Project, additional expenses that were incurred in the new boiler that will keep us warm in the winter when we use this great hall. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Gary Woodbury, seconded by Mr. Chris Woodbury. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Questions or comments? Yes. Barbara.
Barbara Grissell, eighty-seven Jollicaram. How much free cash was left over at the end of FY14? Am I in the right year? The end of last year. How much free cash was left? Because we just spent quite a bit of it here.
Mr. Gardett.
Which, which means that the budget was overstated. If there's free cash left over...
So there's, there's two different free caches that we've used since May. So the free cash that we used in May was left over from actually the previous year. So what we did was, in the fall of two thousand and fourteen, we had money that was available to us at the close of the previous fiscal year, as of July one. So we spent some of that money in the fall of two thousand and fourteen, and the remainder of that money, we spent in the spring and May. So the remainder of the money that was left over from the previous fiscal year actually had a bounce of zero at July first. The big expense that we had in, in free cash was, if you recall, we used about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to balance snow and ice, and then we had some other money to bounce, balance the budget. So we had about nine hundred and sixty-six thousand from the previous fiscal year, spent some in the fall, balanced with snow and ice, and then other capital projects in the spring. So that money that was available to us at the end of fiscal year fourteen had a zero as of July first. So, but we, the money that was available to us, we could use back in May. Okay? So the new money that you voted tonight is money that's available to us in free cash as of July first, two thousand and fifteen. So that's money that's available to us at the closeout of June thirty, two thousand and fifteen, or FY15. So we're now into FY2016. So the money that was either surplus revenue, or was money that was turned back by our departments, was about the same thing. It was just, just about a million dollars. So that money then became available to us as of July, or once the Department of Revenue approved it in October. We now can use it now in the fall, which we have here. So...
So you had a million dollars.
Right. So we have, right. So now, after the motions that you have tonight, you'll have six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that will, that will be available. We spent two seventy here. We spent two seventy here.
And another fifteen.
Right? And we also spent the one on the sick leave fund, and we also spent, uh, five on the Board of Health cleanup, the fourteen here. So I think, I think it was a total of, uh, three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in free cash, which is gonna leave us about six hundred and eighty or so in the spring. So we need that money, right? Cause we, we will have another capital plan come spring. We also have to balance the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget, and whatever we don't use to offset the snow, uh, deficit will be available to us for capital projects, so...
The point I'm saying is your budget...
Microphone, please.
Yep.
Your budget appears to be a little overstated because you got all this left over every year. Every year you have free cash left over.
Correct.
And then the next year, you use it.
Correct.
Why don't we get the numbers in the right years?
Because, so the, the, what, the free cash, if you're familiar in the private sector, that's retained earnings, right? Or it's undesignated balance. So at the end of your closeout of a given period, it's any money that you have above your expenses. So if, for example, last year we had a twenty million dollar budget, and our departments turned back several hundred thousand dollars, you know, ten in the assessors and five in highway and two in police, all that money gets add up. That makes up one portion of our free cash. The second portion is any additional revenue. So if we estimated our excise tax, for example, was a million dollars, but we ended up with one point two million, that two hundred thousand dollars at the end of the fiscal year becomes free cash. So you don't know what free cash is in a given fiscal year. You don't know until you close out June thirtieth, we have our audit over the summer, we send our undesigned surplus to the Department of Revenue, they say, okay, you have nine hundred thousand dollars in surplus. Here you go. It's now available to us. So we're using a portion of it tonight, and then we'll use a portion of it in the fall, and, I'm sorry, in the spring, to, just like we did last year, to balance snow and ice and to use for capital projects again, so...
Just see, it's a little...
It's been the process...
Barbara, do you want?
Since before I was born.
I mean, I was on the finance committee for years, and I know, that's the way you do it.
Okay.
But I'd like to see it a little leaner, a little cleaner, and work out.
In terms of, um, I guess I'm trying to figure out what you're looking for. So at the end of June thirtieth this year, the Department of Revenue approved a certain amount of free cash. It's available to us, and that's one of the reasons why we have this fall town meeting. One is to, um, adjust the budget, as you saw, based on new money or, or new expenses that have come up. And then the other is to address capital needs or sup- uh, supplement reserve funds that, that need to be replenished, which a couple of them tonight did. So some of the capital things, the reason we're not waiting until the spring on them, they need to be done now. For example, the fire department won the hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars as a matching grant. If we don't allocate those funds now, we lose a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So that's why we're not waiting until the spring for that one. Is that maybe one of your questions?
It's almost like we're creating a savings account within our budget.
Okay. And that is what Department of Revenue recommends, and that's what every town does. So the Department of Revenue recommends that at the end of every closeout of every fiscal year, that hopefully you have about five percent of your budget in free cash. Because, and you, you wanna have money that's available for exactly what we're doing, apply to capital projects. There's no line item or budget for five hundred thousand dollars every year, and then in that we apply to capital. We only do capital projects in this town either through free cash or through debt exclusions. So that's one of the reasons that they ask you to, to have that. The other is because you need that money to apply to different reserve funds. Everyone's heard of our rainy day fund, right? So our general stabilization, again, that's another number. That's, Department of Revenue recommends you have ten percent of your budget in reserves and stabilization. We currently only have five percent, and that's a million dollars in our general stabilization rainy day fund. So we're right where we want to be in terms of free cash, in extra revenue that we didn't account for, and money that's getting turned back, and, and, and that million dollars. That's five percent of our overall, actually it's under the twenty-two million dollar budget that you see here. Okay? Um, so that number represents the same number that was raised in free cash back in two thousand and eight, the year before the economy crashed. So when two thousand and eight happened, our free cash, the money that was getting turned back or extra revenue decreased because the, the, the state of Massachusetts was cutting our revenue. They cut our state aid. People weren't buying as many cards. So we didn't have as much excise tax. So from two thousand and eight over to about three years ago, our free cash dipped from one million down to two hundred thousand. We've been working real hard with the Finance Committee, our staff, and, and looking at our revenues and our structure of our budget to try to get that number back up to where DOR wants it at five percent, so that we have money for free cash to do capital projects. If we don't have any free cash, the items that you see right here need to be bought, and the only way we could get that if we didn't have any free cash would be to ask you to increase the tax levy through a debt exclusion. So by having that five percent of free cash, you're able to apply and balance budget when you have deficits. You're able to, um, supplement your reserve funds, build up your stabilization, and then avoid taxpayer increases through the tax levy to buy a fire truck or to buy, uh, things that we're doing in here. The, if we didn't have free cash, we would be asking you to raise the taxes for these items.
Okay, my other question is, how much is in...
Microphone, please.
Yep.
How much is in stabilization?
So the question was how much is in stabilization? So the stabilization is our rainy day fund. You hear that term often. That's our general stabilization fund. We have one million dollars. Again, that represents five percent of our budget. That's half of what the Department of Revenue recommends. They recommend that... Correct. Correct. Yep. So we, they recommend us having about ten percent, which would be about two million dollars. So when we finally get to a point where we don't have as many capital needs, we can shuffle some towards that rainy day fund, we're, we're, we're good.
Many years we have transferred from the free cash into the stabilization, which again is your savings account. But just something to watch, be aware.
Okay. Appreciate the comment. Thank you. Anything else?
Anybody else? So if I can sum all that up for you, the question I think from Barbara was, why aren't we leaner and meaner with the budget? So we don't have such a big surplus, so much free cash. And the answer is the Department of Revenue says best fiscal policy is to plan your budget so you wind up with a five percent surplus at the end of the year to meet unexpected contingencies. And, uh, this Finance Committee and this Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Gardett, uh, has done a wonderful job to get us to that mark. Further questions? Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The question carries by a majority vote. Article Fourteen. Article Fourteen is, is a motion to amend the personnel bylaws effective January one, two thousand and sixteen with regard to dental health and life insurance benefits for non-union town employees. Uh, the motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Fourteen as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Pepe. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
Sometimes we are compelled to change the language in our regulations to conform to, to federal law. And in, in this case, the, according to federal law, benefits are to begin on the first day of employment. So we need to change those, the wording in our personnel bylaws. So we don't have a lot of choice, like so many of the things we do, but this is to keep it all nice and tidy and agreement with, with overriding legislation.
Questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Question carries by a majority vote. Article Fifteen. Article Fifteen is another revision to the personnel bylaws, and this one concerns sick leave incentive and personal days. Motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Pepe. Requires a majority vote. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
This is a housekeeping, uh, matter. This is to, to change the wording in our bylaws so that they are consistent with the, with labor contracts, so that this is just making sure that we, we have, using the same language in all of our, uh, employee benefits and, and, and statements of, of regulations. So there's no change in number there, it's just a change in wording.
Questions? Comments? Ready for the vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Question carries by a majority vote. Article Sixteen. Article Sixteen is the last article for the night. This is a further amendment to the personnel bylaws to create a new position of police detail officer within the compensation schedule. The motion I have is I move to waive the reading and approve Article Sixteen as printed on the warrant. Motion is by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Mr. Pepe. Requires a majority vote. This is effective, again, uh, January one, two thousand and sixteen. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
We currently do not have the position in our bylaws of police detail officer.